Okay, so the reason we call this. I believe we all have a lot of unanswered questions and things we would like to see put in place to. Move forward with any kind of. Joint. Operations or resolutions with the ambulance. I'll open it up. The right questions my colleagues like to throw up there first. I know we had a bunch of them at the council meeting. And I have several myself.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Please go ahead and start off Allison.
Um, yes, I am looking at your profit loss. Statement. Uh, May twenty two through February twenty three. And I see a couple of expenses I'd like to make for me. One is the PIP. What is it? And who does do this that benefit? And why is it behind five thousand dollars?
Do you want to explain that dollar on which time?
Yeah, isn't this something that working? This is the board of directors in the town count.
As a. Would she say I know? Can hear you.
Anyhow, she's that.
Isn't this the board of directors in the town count?
Yes.
But I'd like to hear from the board of directors as to what this is.
The PIP incentive is an incentive program that was used previously. Um, to the last month itself and over the last few years. And what it was is that a program where volunteers were twenty four hours as a volunteer. Each month, and if they work more than twenty four hours, they would be paid ten, twelve dollars. It changed over the years, but it was twelve at the end. Per hour over the twenty four hours of pure volunteer time. So that's what that money is in here.
So that actually benefits your volunteer. It's like an incentive?
It's an incentive for those that work more than that more than twenty four hours.
Okay, and the other thing I see here is the food and snack seven thousand twenty three dollars and forty six cents. Would you explain? That much food, who does benefit?
Uh, volunteers and um.
Are they served trails?
I'm sure I don't know. I do not have all the receipts with me tonight to show you what seven thousand is and to be honest with you, I feel the same as you. I go on the high side, a lot of highs. But in any event, it is the volunteers then they're given coffee or snacks in the uh, in the in the ambulance building.
Okay, and the fast.
And that and during COVID and also that our plan is for that to end. When there's a paid staff. And that if you notice in the budget for twenty twenty three, twenty four, that's dramatically down. Because of the paid people are not going to be given to give the snacks.
And the fast or the fly car?
Sorry, I did.
My fast car, the fly car that you have, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
The black SUV. Um, I'd like to know about the mileage that is incurred on a yearly basis. And what its usage is in specific.
I'd like the chief to speak to that one if you would.
Yeah, so our fly car, it's actually a it's a blue Tahoe. It's fully marked with East Hampton ambulance graphics. Um, it was originally brought on. Uh, we had a difficult period where we had some issues staffing calls. And we wanted to make sure that if we didn't have a full crew to be able to go to a medical. We were able to go to medicals at least with one EMT and provide care on scene. So that we could free up a police officer so they're not there for a while waiting in mutual aid ambulance. We can't just send an ambulance to the scene of a call with one EMT. It'd be against our state regulations. So we're able to now bring one EMT to the scene. The other benefit it had was since we're a volunteer service and a lot of people to be able to bring it home. And then be able to respond directly to the scene and meet the other EMT bringing the ambulance to the scene. So it helped reduce response times in terms of getting the ambulance and care to a scene. The first week that we actually had our fly car. It was able to respond to a cardiac arrest at Edgmere. It had a Lucas device on it. And then we're actually able to get a Lucas on a patient. Uh, pretty quickly compared to if our ambulance had to wait for both members to go to the bay, get the ambulance and respond. So it's helped uh, free up mileage or free up uh. You know, personnel, uh, free up the police officers and then be able to provide care quick but quicker. Uh, in terms of mileage, it's about twelve thousand miles right now. We've had it for. Four years. It doesn't. The only time it leaves town is for training. Uh, meetings or events, but most of the time it is in town providing care to the residents. The other benefit it does have. Uh, it has a mass casualty kit on board. It has radios that can uh, use interoperability with the state and middle town system. Uh, which not every single vehicle in terms of emergency services in this town has. Uh, so it could be used at a mass casualty incident or incident, and there are still many other victims. Uh, in terms of the fares, we were able to bring it. At Old Home Day last year, we were able to park that vehicle down at Old Home Day instead of parking our large ambulance. We had concerns that with a larger ambulance and Old Home Day starting back up. That having large ambulances with a bunch of kids running around, that's the safest thing. So we were able to park our SUV down there. Provide care. It has a full medical bag. It pretty much has everything. On that vehicle and ambulance would minus the structure and some backboards. So it has um, like I said, a Lucas, a suction, an AED. Full medical bag, a pediatric medical bag. Um, a mass casualty incident bag and a stop the bleed kit. Uh, which has tourniquets, quick clotting events that you could use a larger amount like that. So we've tried to use it in terms of. Providing better care to the town and then the event if there ever is a mass casualty in town. We want to make sure we're prepared to handle that.
And then one more question I have is the amount or number of calls you have per year. And then how many of those calls are refusals?
Yep, so um, from our last, so I I've been starting trying to track data a little bit better. Uh, because right now with our dispatch data, I have to manually look at the reports every month. Uh, which does take a lot of time. And uh, for me to go through it with our calls. Uh, for the last report I had for our board of directors last month in March. Uh, for this year, eighty percent of our calls resulted in a patient transport. So the other twenty percent were either calls where we were canceled. Uh, resulted in a refusal of when the person was deceased. That's typically where that other twenty percent. Um, as of our meeting on Tuesday, we had three hundred twenty eight calls for the year so far. Uh, it was about ten more calls than last year at this point in time. Uh, we've had a few calls today, so I don't have the exact number of calls, but I can look it up in a second. Let you know.
That's close enough. Thank you very much.
Yep.
It's a question I just maybe more of a statement. Uh, I appreciate the profit and loss. Document. So for me, my my only holdup with even taxpayer dollars. The association has been. I would like a total. Picture of the association. I'd like to know what they have in savings, what they have in checking, what they have in investments, what they have. Where's the total? Assets available like that now? If you. What you are getting is figure out proper law statement versus last year, first two pages. Proper law statement versus our budget, the following two pages. The fifth page is our balance sheet. Doing both current assets as well as long term assets. Okay, I'm sorry. You have a few pages. The last. That's the last few pages is the documentation for our balance sheet. One of the concerns I have when I have treasure was there were too many treasures. That uh, scum with money and fraud. So I make sure on a balance sheet that I give the documentation for every item, every current asset of those all bank accounts. We have an account with TD merit rate. Uh, little funds. As well as our sweep account that goes into our checking account. So it's all there. Anybody who wants to ask me questions about it, I'd be glad to answer it. And this is through March. Which is eleven months. Our fiscal year ends at the end of April this year, and that goes along with the state. They require us to have a fiscal year that ends in April. All set here? You have more questions? No, no, thank you very much. We provide this monthly uh, for the board. Uh, each hour we meet, I provide a treasurer's report.
I've got a few. Um, one, I I know we we see that we have to hire a consultant. Is that that's a one time thing? It's something you're not going to keep on.
As well as.
Okay. Uh, this is just because I'm curious. What's garage damage? What's garage damage?
Yeah, we we had more curious and. Oh, so we had an incident uh, when one of the EMTs did have a an accident involving the garage bays. So it was reported at all the proper meetings.
No, I was more nosy than anything on that one.
Yeah, that's right. We're the uh, building maintenance and repairs.
Um, the other thing I have, being the car guy that I am, I see that you're going to replace the engine on this and you got a price of this. You actually have somebody who goes out and does this correctly?
Yep, we had a dealer who um, handles all our ambulances. He works.
My question, do you shop around or is you just go to one dealer and one dealer only?
For he actually handles all of our.
I know who he is.
Okay.
And he does not shop around. Okay, so that needs to stop. I agree. I mean, I think that's you should. If you're looking for something, don't you shop around a little bit?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, in that, if I may explain, in that specific circumstance, there was a backorder on those engines.
There still is.
Yeah, and he was able to find one that was sitting on a shop ready to go. So we were able to have that replaced within a week.
There's three thousand on backorder today.
He got one within a week and installed this.
How much you think you paid over on it?
Uh, he didn't pay us over on it, he said.
Okay. You have that bill?
Yeah.
I'd like to see a copy of that, please. I want to show you how much you could have saved.
Okay. So now to be rude here, but how you gonna save if you got a back order and you're down one ambulance?
Oh, I I'm I'm gonna show you. This is what I do. I will show it to you. It's a bet you pay ten thousand dollars more than you probably should have.
Okay.
And he needs to, you need to, besides this, the man needs to do his job and shop around because that's what you're paying for, right?
Okay.
I have one question. Does your personnel get paid for signing up for a shift? Whether they had the house or not? How does that work out? I mean, I need, explain to me your shift coverage. So I have a a thorough understanding. How do you guys? Make sure you have somebody on from say, I don't know what you run from the twelve to six or whatever your hours are. Obviously, you've got.
Yes, multiple shifts. Currently, we're transitioning um, you know, in terms of uh, paying members to be able to provide shift coverage. We moved to uh, looking at six hour shifts. So six AM to noon, noon to six PM and so on. Uh, we're trying to be able to have complete shift coverage by doing that. Uh, with that, so our PRDM members are trying to get them to. Six hour blocks. Uh, when we hire people, let them know that so these are the requirements and meeting the six hour blocks. Offering them the ability or flexibility in terms of finding coverage in case they need to have someone swap an hour or two so they can leave early. Uh, with that, uh, in terms of our volunteer or incentive members. They uh, have a little bit more flexibility with it, but certainly we're offering them the six hour blocks as well to sign up for. We do have quite a few members who are signing up for those six hour blocks.
So on a on a normal shift, how many people would you have sign up?
Uh, we are looking at two people twenty four seven covering an ambulance. If we have someone who's a volunteer member. Uh, they're able to sign up as a third person. Uh, or we could potentially have a fourth person as a volunteer sign up, and then we have two ambulances staffed. In terms of physically paying people. We're looking at at a minimum two, uh, sorry, at a maximum of two people. Except during the daytime, Monday through Friday, where our heightened call responses. During that period, you have myself. And then potentially a third person so we can cover a second ambulance. Our call volume does peak around noon time, Monday through Friday, and that's where we're trying to make sure we have it covered.
Now, a couple of questions. Now that we're getting into, you're getting into the hiring. Who's in charge of all the hiring?
The higher process I am in charge of.
So you're solely in charge of hiring all the members. It's left up to you. Our board has absolutely no say in that?
The board has entrusted me in hiring the best EMT professionals for the next this time. For our first process, we interviewed twelve candidates. Uh, we've only selected six to move on. Three have started so far. Uh, we had originally offered it to four. One person. Had too much time. Um, their job, they worked landscaping. Uh, it increased for the summer. So they went to us ahead of time out of respect and said they would be able to dedicate the proper time to our town. And the other ones were making sure that they have a proper training cycle so that we can actually make sure they meet all the requirements and provide service to our town.
So people you're hiring, just give me an example. First, you're hiring. You're giving them six hour shifts. Or how many shifts per week would you that person be doing?
Right now.
Full time position or you just hiring all part timers?
All PRDM employees. The only full time employee is myself without benefits.
Okay, there it is. Basically hourly part time out. But you're still required, are you required to assume to pay the social security and the taxes and workplace comp and all that other stuff that goes into having employees? Okay. But. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Scranton, if you're doing all the daily nuts and bolts operation to the ambulance. What is the function of the board of directors?
So the board ultimately handles our organization, the organization entity. You know, in terms of financial oversight, overview. Bylaws, uh, making sure that the Secretary of State filing. I mean. Their goal is to make sure that the town of East Hampton has the best ambulance service again, and they're the oversight at the end of the day when it comes to that. I report directly to them.
Guess that's a good time. I guess I'd like to start. More of my questions are coming from the the contract plan between ourselves. That. Like I said, I've I've stated at this point that one of how it was approved to last year when we had our original questions about required response times. Any set points, any requirements that. You guys are held to uh, with the town. This wasn't brought up. Um, and like I said before, reading through it, it's supposed to be reviewed no less than yearly. Not supposed to be approved through town manager's book, you're approved through the town council. And. And so I'd like to go, I guess, just line by line through it because I'm I'm guessing. So just like you were talking about shopping out for other services, right? Or anything else, I'd like to talk about like the agreement that's going to be between the towns, especially if it goes from. No money to more money. And I I think that's the fairest way to start in my eyes. So I mean.
Especially if you have a company.
Oh, the contract?
It's not a contract. Correct?
Yeah, it's it's pretty much an agreement, but it's not a.
So the agreement is planned between the ambulance association and the town.
But it's not just the ambulance association. Am I right?
Yeah, it holds the same standards to the police department, the fire department and our paramedics.
It's not a con. Go ahead.
It it is, if if you read the EMS plan in its entirety, all three hundred pages. I don't know if you had an opportunity to do all all pages.
Well, most of them, I had the ones that were specifically. To the EMS service.
So it actually, the EMS plan encompasses all EMS components in the town of East Hampton. So that's the ambulance, the police department, the fire department and the paramedic service. So if you look at it, it actually has response times for all four of those services. Along with uh, requirements of all four of those services.
Yes. Okay, so have you guys or who has been submitting the the PSA, PSAR reports? The town manager every three months? That shows the response times.
There has not been any submitted.
Okay, so.
No, I agree.
So you're getting upset with me about this. There's been nothing and it says.
Getting upset with you.
That every three months.
I'm just stating a fact. It's not a contract.
So there has been no report submitted. So we, right now, we have no known reports of what response times are.
I think so. Uh, back in two thousand two, there actually used to be um, an EMS committee for the town. It can see, it was. Part of the director of public health at the time that we had. The town manager. Um, a select board member, town council member, uh, the the paramedic service representative and the EMS chief. At that time, that was when a lot of that stuff was reviewed and it seems like it had fallen by the wayside over the years. Uh, in terms of it's kind of that community involvement and that better oversight. I believe it did kind of fall apart when we had switched to no longer having a director of public health and moving it more towards chattel. Um, so it is one of those things that, yes, it's it's fallen by the wayside and I certainly want to be transparent with our numbers and provide reports to be able to do that.
Cool, and I and I heard you say that your reports are difficult right now because it's manual.
Yeah, a lot of, in terms of response times, I have to go through our dispatch reports. And kind of look at it and making sure that, you know, okay. These are calls where it was a second caller. These were called, there was a third call. We're making sure the times line up sometimes.
I see that, and if it's a second call, there's a breakdown of.
Correct.
What was the reasoning for it? Like it excludes other times of bad weather, equipment breakdown. So I get that one. So I understand that's difficult. But just looking at this generally, if we have an agreement, right, this I guess would be the basic, okay, I gotta go back to the contract, but agreement between. Us specifically or, you know, everyone that's part of the MS service. Figure this is the place that I would like to start knowing what the town is going to get along with. He was talking more, they were talking more financially.
Yeah, I'd love to share the information in terms of response times and showing that we're meeting all those requirements.
So one of my other questions when it comes to the mutual aid agreements. So you said this is not specifically with you. This is also a fire department and police. This is what it, this is encompassing?
Yes.
It says there hasn't been a mutually agreement. With surrounding town since two thousand two and there was a goal of. I I guess, okay, so you had objectives and goals and this was listed, and if this doesn't specifically you, then I apologize. But do we have? A mutually in agreement with the other town?
So we have. How, this is how I would personally preface it. They're not legally binding mutually agreements. They need to be rewritten and better encompassing. I've approached East Tatum recently. I've spoken to their first select woman. Uh, we're not trying to have one better written for them. Uh, we do not have one with such as Hunter's Ambulance. So trying to make sure that's squared away because Hunter's Ambulance has had to come into our town before. We do have mutually agreements with East Tatum, Marlboro and Colchester. Uh, but they're basically the same mutually agreement that have been written since two thousand two.
So that's, so it's definitely not just with you guys. So I feel like that'd be something that like. I'd like to bring up now in the future encompassing fire, police, EMS, because that sounds like that's something that has to be.
Yeah, I mean, even on level. Even the fire departments, I mean. There's the all, at the end of the day, there's the all encompassing statewide fire rescue disaster plan. And that basically says that you can call for anyone at any point. But a lot of it is where we fall into the state of Connecticut. A lot of towns around us are part of the valley shore um, compacts or mutual aid agreements. But we're not part of Valley Shore Dispatch. So we really haven't been included in those. So we look at around us, we're we're an oddity because every other town around us is in a different dispatch center. And a lot of the mutual aid agreements are based off dispatch.
We're part of Glassbury, right?
Part of Glassbury.
But that's not a mutually, realistically, that is not mutually.
No, and it's, so like you look at Marlboro, they're part of the Talon uh, you know, mutually compact.
Right.
QV, which is Colchester. They're they're part of that mutually compact. And then here we are kind of in our own little oddity away from everyone that's surrounded differently. Um, in terms of like our police department, there's no mutual aid in terms, there's mutually in terms of a police response, but in terms of a medical R one or something, there's no mutual aid in terms of that.
Is there something that the town can do to help that? I've just. When I, when I'm reading this and I see that not legally binding, that kind of scares me.
No, I mean.
And overall, that comes to the town in general, right? Whether we need help, someone else needs help. Right? Is there something at a town level that's?
Yeah, I think.
Good or should be done to help out?
Yeah, I mean, this is certainly, it's uh, something that would be great to offer. I think it's just one of those things that. We've had it mutually agreement. It's kind of just. You, it's in that EMS plan. It's a one page piece of paper.
Right, I saw that.
But I've had one signed with Haddon for the Haddon Lake uh, district that we fall under.
Right.
And that that's like, you know, a seven page document. So it's a little bit more encompassing, you know, holding people in terms of liabilities. But we want to make sure that, you know, we eventually get to those points with everything.
And I guess that's, that's why I'm bringing more of this stuff up is just feel like, even if we're not, we're going to become more legally binding if we go into a. Paid service or more money going to, it's different when it was all volunteer, I feel like, because then it was like. Definitely more independent, definitely more out of the way, but now when more of the money gets involved, it's it's kind of like, we want to make sure this is a. Completely legal and squared away thing that it's like being signed off, turned over, being paid for. So you know, we're not. Kind of like, not just giving out, but giving out money and it's, we're not hitting these wickets that's been in this agreement. So again, if this is something that needs help. Please submit that saying like, the the town on this level needs to go, because you were saying you reach out to the first like men. So to them, is that other towns? Like who, who else do you need help from? Like, feel free to push that one forward. Um. What? Going back to the, I'm gonna jump back to it again, the response times and everything you say you do it manually. What do other towns do that is, so it's not manually written down? So it's.
So.
Like I guess walking through the most easiest automated service or.
So the most easiest automated service is the state every year uh, provides a data set. It's called SEMSTARS. C E M S T A R S. And what it is, is someone at the Office of Emergency Medical Service. Actually pulls everyone's data from their charting software. That they have to be compliant to, and then they use that data to show the response times.
Do we get a data year late? Because I've seen, like this one includes like two thousand twenty data, I think it includes, just because it was agreed upon in two thousand twenty one. Uh, I think we saw general numbers for the year before that, but it wasn't broken down into specifics of.
Yeah, so with the EMS plans, um, at least from looking at other communities and talking to um, the representative of OMS who does it. They don't want you to put specific response times. Because they want you to have a little bit of leniency and kind of open with it. But if there's ever a complaint to the state or anything like that, and now all of a sudden, a police officer shows up two seconds too late. Now it's, you know, the town's held liable in terms of that response time.
Then how could we rewrite this differently? Because as a state, it does want those specific.
It wants in terms of percentiles rather than exactly percentages, I think, that shows in that.
Fifty percent, or depending on. The standard times excluding their, that's what I'm saying. Is it supposed to be written better that? In a way that it could be an actual three month report?
Yeah, no, I understand. It's a, I think it's one of those days you also have to consider the the town in which you're in the community and you're in in terms of. How far things are and then the oddities of in terms of. Maybe the ambulance is starting from the hospital or anything like that.
And big thing, because if it does go paid, right, this would be like the numbers like, hey, this is working, right? This is what it is. This is the calls. This is the response time. Because like if it goes paid and you have someone fully staffed or at least one crew fully staffed, right? That seems to be the main goal, right? We agree with that one. Start with at least one truck at all times. Then move on from there. Like we would expect to see some type of. This is what we expect to see. This is what we are meeting. And I think that goes hand in hand. It's that they were doing good. We're going to continue what we're doing. Or we need help or this just isn't working with this plan that we presented, right? There's three ways to look at that. So there, I think. There, there should be some type of amendment on top of this and some of the other goals that are through here. That haven't quite been there yet and whether that's. Just need to communicate that more to go ahead with that. I I feel like there should be some type of.
Yeah.
So that we are meeting our goals and I I think that's fair.
Yeah, I agree. Our our goal by doing this is to lower response times and be able to quit more calls.
Right.
You know, that that's, if we can do those two in our book, that we've accomplished something in being able to.
Right.
A response.
So if we got to come up with a better system or show improved with that also, instead of just handwriting, so it could be completely bracketed. These are the calls. First, second, you know, mutually, everything completely broken down, the reasons why you couldn't go, whatever that is. Showing we're meeting it. I mean, that's just, that's the basic numbers. Um, and I.
Yeah, so I've actually, um.
This is what I meant, like, I think we should work together on, we don't have that committee anymore.
Yeah.
I think this is where it comes to. Suggestions either you have for this. This is like the only, I guess, the closest thing you have is a binding document between us.
Yeah.
So I feel like this is the best place to start.
No.
If there's stuff that isn't up to date or is in here because it's been in here for twenty years, then we need to get rid of that. Why have a law if you're not following it? That type of deal.
Yeah.
Um, and on our end too, so. Those, those are some of my biggest concerns of, I think, we need to see more if it's every three months, month. Something like that type of standardized report showing of. If you are starting to hire, hey, this plan is working, this is where you said you have some older data, I know it's. A pain to get, I wish there was a way we can kind of.
Yeah, no, I could certainly provide it from our charting software, um it's just, I have to go in and verify that. What got imported from our dispatch software was accurate, we had someone the other day. Um, actually yesterday specifically, they called up and it showed that their ambulance was on scene an hour after the call was over. So there was an issue there, um sometimes uh if the unit's not properly assigned, it shows a long response time. And then like I said, I go in, um and my assistant chief Manny will go in, review calls and then say. Why do the ambulances take twenty eight minutes, you know, I brought that up the other day, I said, why did this ambulance take so long? Well, turns out they responded from Hartford to the call, so that's why it was such a response time. Uh, but I've been trying to go in, verify that the times are accurate with that printed out dispatch report.
Mm hmm.
And uh, like I said, hopefully it's something we could eventually figure out, but right now that's the way it works, and I think just trying to manually. Review it, make sure the times are appropriate.
That's, that's very, we appreciate that, so that'd be. I guess, I don't know if there's more suggestions or whatever, if anyone else has for this agreement, I just think. Well, this, yes.
Is that for, is 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 that a state form?
The EMS plan?
Yeah.
So the EMS plan, so every community of the state of Connecticut is required to submit an EMS plan, there's actually a lot of communities that do not have one. Active or submitted, our last one was submitted in twenty sixteen, and then this one was submitted in twenty twenty one. Prior to that, the last one was in two thousand and two, it is a state mandate, um in terms of one of the uh. Statutes that says you have to submit it, in terms of it, it is submit.
So they did, they what could be in your report?
They have a recommendation, they have a toolkit that you could follow, and the very basic reports could be ten pages. Some of them, they want to see more detailed reports, when I submitted it, they probably said it was one of the more better detailed reports I've ever seen, just because. It encompasses more in terms of, you know, here's a question of the EMS, you know, and EMS plan should be all encompassing, including all the departments.
Well, my point is that, that form has been around for a while. It's not only the ambulance, the town side has ignored it.
Yeah, I mean.
I agreed, I pointed that one out, that. This is where it should start, he said that committee went away, so we should be more involved in it.
Yeah, like I said, we have one from two thousand and two, I still have it up file in our office, and it's uh, um, you can see how different they've been.
Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but pretty much everybody signed off on that form.
On the two thousand and twenty one plan?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, my signatures, I don't remember who all signed on it.
Yeah.
Certainly mine's on it.
That's precisely my point, I don't want anybody thinking that it's the ambulance that dropped the ball at all. It was like a pro form thing.
Oh, no, not, no, no, that was never any accusation from that here.
No.
Or that I believed as a council, we should have sought.
Right.
But, and that's not there, I don't trust me, there was no claim going that way.
It was, it was pretty much past practice in terms of the towns, and even uh talking to our local towns around us. Colchester, the fire chief and the first electman sign off, it doesn't go to their uh council.
I I understand that, however. Things are changing, you guys are looking for money, so when people come looking for money, that's when things change and we should have been aware.
True.
And should have started right at that point saying, okay, going forward, what do we need to do?
True.
That was basically our concern is to, if 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 things were, it is, you weren't sitting across the table because you didn't care, didn't need anything, what do I care if he signs it, it means nothing. Things have changed, you're looking to get some finance, and so we need to relook at that and get it relooked at and and um. Add, we have to add, because we're, it's more becoming, it's looking to become more of a partnership. Once we start putting money into your uh association. Couple of questions on our, what is your goal? For for like maximum hours? And what I mean by that is, if if I do my math correctly, if you run a two man crew with twenty four hours a day. Three hundred and sixty five a year, you write roughly about seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty hours, be precise. Is that what you're looking to do? And if so. What is your anticipated payment, how much are you paying per hour, I mean, the plan you have, if you can get two people. To work three different shifts, so it'd be six people per day. Part time, you're doing better than anyone else in the world, because nobody can find part time help. I would just congratulate you if you complete that, if you manage to do that. That cost of playing a part time employee versus a full time will be a lot less, because. Once you go into full time, you get a whole lot of other things, there are benefits, time off, all this stuff, and things get out of control.
Yeah, so right now, um, we just started, uh we transitioned uh the beginning of April. To look at, you know, this per diem model and try and hire people and move forward. Right now, uh but I actually did um look through it the other day. Uh, we do have some openings, um typically Friday nights, Saturday uh afternoons and Sundays. Uh, there's two overnights where there are some gaps right now. This is not really bringing in too many people from the outside who we've hired yet, we've only had three starts so far, and they're on training right now, we can't have them go on their own just yet. Other than that, um, most of those other times during the day, we have coverage right now in terms of that. Uh, part time model or volunteer coverage, making sure those are covered.
We still have number of people, which can remain as volunteers.
Oh, absolutely, I I.
Yeah.
That's, that's going to be the absolute villain in the saving, and it's going to make this worse, because the minute you have to go to all full time employees. You're a million, two million per year, all day long.
The other benefit we have is um the ability that we have people who live in towns. So now when we have second calls or third calls, or we need to look for an ambulance coverage, we can always put it out to those members and have them come back in. Uh, they're able to fill in and kind of on that, you know, quarterly hour basis in terms of fifteen minutes. Um, the other thing in terms of you had asked about how much we're paying. Uh, right now, our advertisements are for EMT driver, we're paying twenty dollars an hour. Uh, in terms of our current members, uh if you're only an EMT, it's nineteen dollars an hour, and for our EMR slash drivers, it's eighteen dollars an hour. So um you look at the rates in terms of the area around us, and we're a little bit higher than the other services. Uh, but it's very difficult to find EMTs and we need to be competitive. Um, there are people that are constantly raising their prices in terms of how much they pay. Uh, but in terms of our call volume or equipment we have, or we, you know, we have a lot better equipment than some other services around us, and a better facility. Um, so with that money, I'm out, we seem to have kind of, believe in our opinion. Uh, we have pretty good starting pay for this area, right now, there's nothing planned in terms of increases or anything like that, but. Certainly, cost of living is going to have to go up eventually over the years, and. I do foresee that probably in the future changing in terms of.
So should the rates?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, we keep that reality, um. Have you put forward, you, I know we're talking about, so you're giving me numbers, but have you sat down with anyone to put together a business plan as to. Show me, showing, not showing the council the numbers and everyone else. With your projections, because you, you have your, your call list, the minor number of calls coming in. Right on, I love it.
It worked business. Um, what I'm giving you now is a projected budget. Twenty three, twenty four, which will begin May first. Um, that's the far right hand column, the other three columns that go to the year, last three complete fiscal years. If you have a chance to uh take a look and see how the budget can move in comparison. But you're never going to ask.
Why are you kind of asking a question? Certainly, go ahead. I I just got a quick question, I think you've done a very good job of trying to, or just getting your feet wet and then, and getting some people up and running. Uh, I'm going to throw another curveball at you that probably marks you upset about is, how do you think on uh retaining these people? I mean, if you've got good people, you want to keep them, right?
True.
What do you, I almost have to put that in the back of your mind, I know you're talking about increases obviously, but uh. It's almost like you have to make something, if you've got good people, you want to keep them there, because you've done well so far. And Mark, I'm like Mark said, I'm impressed, I I gotta tell you, because I figured you wouldn't get that many already, uh but you gotta keep good people.
I mean, so far, um, I mean, some of my members might be able to be better suited to ask that question.
Just was something I was throwing out, because actually, like I said, I'm.
Some of these people have been twenty years.
Yeah, no, that's great.
For nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, at least.
No, I said before, I I'm very impressed with the whole thing, we're very blessed to have volunteers.
I mean, we, we, I'm not, I'll be a person honest, I'm not always wearing a white shirt, I'm usually down, I'm riding calls, I. I went in the back of the ambulance twice today, going to Hartford and East Adam. So, I don't try to push myself on a higher pillow than anyone else with that, I'm still going to all these calls, I try to be, you know, be an open door. Where people text me, call me at all hours, be able to ask the questions, you know, we try to be able that if someone brings an idea or suggestion up. We actually let them, you know, we entertain it, we actually hear it out.
Good.
And just even stuff like, you know, new pediatric equipment and everything like that, and just being able.
Getting a good, good work environment.
And I think the other thing too is just the equipment that we've been fortunate in the facilities we've had over the years. You know, just having the ability to replace our ambulances on a regular basis. Uh, our current ones, we are pushing on a little bit, but we make sure that we keep up on them and they're they're constantly cleaned and they're, they have, like I said, all the good equipment they can.
Well, I'm worried about Mr. Brown building, if something happens to Mr. Brown, I have to make sure someone comes fix him up.
But it is one of those things, I mean, um, you know, not for comparisons of it, but. You you see a fire truck, you don't go inside a fire truck, you go inside an ambulance. So we make sure that our ambulances are that, hey, one of the members from the public have to call and be here, that. They're kind of impressed on the ambulance, you go into a smaller van ambulance, and you're crammed up against the wall, you know, the thing's been. Run into the ground, and the next thing you know, it's it's like, I'm scared to be in here, we don't want people to be scared to be.
My interesting is, like I said, I'm probably going against everybody, but we talked about the snacks and refreshments there, with the nine thousand dollars, see, I don't even have a problem with that. I really don't, because I think that's, that's just, that's good. As in, you know what, I appreciate all you guys do, and if I gotta buy you, you know, a thing of popcorn or something, it's all good. I mean, if everybody volunteers, and 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 the volunteers want nine thousand dollars with the snacks, and they want some coffee from Dunkin' Donuts, I'm good.
Yeah, even with um, I can.
I would agree with you on that.
You know, I mean, that's what I guess I was talking about, two big people happy and volunteering. That, that's stuff like that's, that's all good.
Yeah, I mean, just that, I know Dave talked briefly about the food and snacks, and I'd like to just elaborate a little on it. It is, it's it's for the the chips, you know, the sodas.
Sure.
The occasional Dunkin' Donuts coffee, you know, when we have our meetings, pizza.
Right.
And our appreciation dinner we hold every year with the fire department, you know, making sure that the members are are truly appreciated for why they're there and. You know, we be sure of that, so.
Like, um, Tim, I have the utmost confidence in the ambulance. Board of directors that run it, you wouldn't be around seventy years if you weren't doing something right. Number one. I understand the predicament that you're facing, a lot of towns are facing. I think we were trying to address that. And that's why we're here. Tonight. I want to see the ambulance here for another seventy years. But you won't be here. Speaking.
But you won't be here.
I think you could speak for yourself, don't speak for me, because I plan on being here.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
In that city.
It may be. I can't predict the future, and if I'm here, it could be this soon. But anyhow. Um, I want to see you guys around for a long time. Uh, I think our goal should be just that, helping them be around for the next seventy years. And what can we do? Make that happen. I understand the oversight. But as I can see, I think you've got your financial end pretty much nailed down. Of what you um can look at, what you've spent, where you're going in terms of far as financial. It comes to. What Mark had mentioned about the town and what their role, should you get money from the town? I take it this way. I look at the ambulance association, and I look at the Department of Health. We're entering into the same kind of setup. We have a regional health department. But we have the town manager sitting on that board, and um. I think with the ambulance. And I, I would like to see the same kind of setup. Where. Dave sits on, sits on the board as he does with the health department, as the oversight. Person for the town. No more than that. You submit your financial reports monthly, he gets them monthly, he can give them to um. Our finance department, they can review. I'm not, I don't think. We, as a council, want to get into nitty gritty, day to day. Operation that you've successfully done for seventy years. But also, I am a realist, if you put town dollars there. We have to have some oversight. And that's the, and I think the oversight should be. Now.
No, I would, I would, I was saying, is that like the idea in lieu of uh what was brought up before about having members on the board from like the council or finance? Is that what you mean?
Well, I have a problem with that.
Okay.
Um, for two reasons, I don't think we can speak for the board of finance, because they're elected body just like we are. I don't even know if they're interested in serving. On on any member serving on that, um, the ambulance board. We, and where, where does that put them if they're serving on the board? If if a request comes from the ambulance for money. And you're sitting on that board. Then you go back to the finance. Do you get the vote?
Dave, you had some, uh, because I had, I had asked that question. What have you found?
Well, I don't know that Rich has finalized that, but I, my conversation with you and and others has been. If it's an assignment of the council, my opinion would be that if it's an assignment of the council, that member could participate fully in both sides. And I would say that because they're there. Um, not in their private capacity, but they're in their capacity as a council member or a board of finance member.
It's the same.
And I think Rich is looking at that. That matter of voting or non-voting, does that make a difference?
Well, if we're going to have members there, definitely wanted to be voting members, absolutely, I would say what's going on.
But can I just say that the health department, you mentioned that they're a regional group, it's not just East Hampton, so. It makes sense that the town manager would be part of that, to represent us, um, we. We have no objection having, you know, if some, someone wants to be on our board, but it's um. If they have to be, I would say a member, a regular member. Yes, if you wanted to do that, I'm, and I know that the town manager here in town. Um, Dave and all the ones before would always go, no one is on the board of the firehouse, fire department. Do not on that board, it's all volunteers and and Dave goes representing the town. He would certainly be welcome to come to any of our meetings, because he represents the town. Um, and he goes to many meetings, that's all, town managers have before him, and that's the way it's always worked.
Yeah, Barb, there's there's a couple of huge differences, let me get into the health district, that seems to be the one that's brought, the health district is put together not by any member of the public. There are no sitting members of the public, it is all town managers or first electing from every town that's in it. That's the difference, the other difference is, excuse me, I thought I was trying to answer your question. That's the difference. The other difference is, excuse me, I thought I was trying to answer your question. Chad Health District, you sit on that board?
East Hampton gets two, as does Colchester, everybody else had it.
Sorry, I have been for probably, um, eight or nine years, but a long time.
Okay, but the fire department, but there's no members on that, but they are one hundred percent controlled by the town council. Council picks every one of their board members. I don't think that's something you want to.
Yeah.
If you did, it's a different story.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, you guys are separate, a whole separate association, all by yourself, you're a private association. The East Hampton Fire Department is not a private association, nor is the Chad Health District.
No.
Quite honestly, so there is a big difference. Being a private organization, going forward, we need, we, I feel we need at least two voting seats on there, so we have some sort of say. One person doesn't necessarily have much say, we have two people looking out for the town's best interest. I'm kind of adamant about that, I think that has to happen.
If, if I may, just to speak up, with it, I think, at least coming from my perspective. Um, if we were to have representatives from the town on it, we certainly would want people that want to improve EMS for the town. And they're actually gonna have that kind of full function of the board in terms of that, you know, wanting to be interested. Attending these other events that we have, like we have our open houses and stuff like that, you know, our board members attended our trucker retreats. We don't, I mean, this, for me, I would like to see someone who's gonna be involved, who's actually gonna be showing up to these events, they wanna get CPR trained. You know, they, they actually want to have a kind of a, you know, support for ambulance, just like our current board members do. You know, where they come to these events and everything, not just their meeting once a quarter, once a month, however it was, and, uh. Disappear for afterwards with that.
I agree with that one, and that'd be a fine stipulation, come back to like this agreement, because, and I'm, I'm hammering on this, but you don't wanna create a code, right? Cause you, it is a separate entity, so it's not gonna have a code, the charter, anything like that, so there does have to be some type of deal. So I, I definitely hear your point, you don't want someone in there that's just gonna be. I, I, you want someone involved who actually wants to be there, and that makes a lot of sense, so if it's in there, if there was a back and forth of two members. They must get certified, go to so many events throughout the year, if you have twelve events, they have to at least go to. Order of them in the public, something like that, right, to be actively out there.
And the board.
That's, yes.
That's what we do.
I'm sorry, I said.
No, 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 I was talking, that's what we do, he said as a board member to do, yeah.
Yeah, the chief was asking that, that would be okay on someone from the council of finance type deal, but they'd have to be active participation. Public members, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that should be, if, if, that would be a fair stipulation of. You'd have to actually participate in it.
I think that, cause I think that right there makes or breaks in terms of, you know, we, it helps the organization as a whole, and that's.
And that's fine, that comes back to like any other type of committee or anything, if you don't show up to at least seventy percent of the meetings in the year, you can get kicked off any type of committee, right? And I feel like that's fair.
Yeah, our, our bylaws do have a stipulation, it's if you don't attend three meetings in a row, you're removed, and that's where we're just making sure. Everyone holds the same, you know, our bylaws and their participating members.
And right, so we couldn't control, or like the town council, the town itself can't control your bylaws, but at least this is like. If you do make changes, you have any type of presentations, like that's part of this package, and we see it, hey, we're making a change, it doesn't take. Town council's approval, but you have someone on the committee who sees that, and that comes before us and that's updated, right? Just, I guess, more transparency that way, that makes a lot of sense though.
Yeah.
You don't want someone who's never around.
We, um, we actually at our meeting on Tuesday, um. We made a motion, uh, to modify the bylaws, this is, I'm reading the motion now, it was passed, by the way. Modify the bylaws to increase the board of directors membership to nine members, and offer up to two seats to the town council slash board of finance. In accordance with bylaws, that covers what we just talked about, membership requirements. With award of full annual requested subsidy to support current and future emergency medical operations in the town of East Hampton. So if you give us the money, we're gonna give you two members on the board, we've already voted on it and passed.
First of all, I appreciate the fact that everyone is here tonight, I also appreciate the fact. That, uh, many of us have come with questions, and I wanna thank Mr. Scranton. Uh, for doing a very nice job of answering the myriad of questions that we've had. I truly do appreciate what the ambulance association has done for the many years that I've been in the community, and, uh, you've been very good to my family. There are a few questions that I have, uh, and, uh, unfortunately for Mr. Cox, the. He'll probably jotting down notes and taking things back home or back to his office. First of all, and I don't expect Mr. Cox to answer the question tonight, but, uh. When I review this budget, uh, there are a lot of things in here that the town also does. Uh, and I'd be very interested at some point, Mr. Cox, and appreciating. With the ambulance association being a part of the community and a part of the financial structure of the, uh. Town, uh, what savings can we in, see based on insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Cause there are many things in this budget that are duplicated throughout budgets, uh, that are handed over to you. And you incorporate into the town budget. Secondly. I appreciate Mr. Cox's opinion, but, uh, I, I'd like to have. Our legal staff give us opinion on whether it would be. Appropriate to have a member of the board of finance and or town council sit as members on the ambulance board. I appreciate the fact that the ambulance board has taken the initiative to prepare this. This motion, uh, I certainly did hear the caveat that spilled into that motion. Uh, and I don't have a problem with that caveat, but, uh. I think we really need to know. Pretty quickly. What we can and can't do. I also appreciate the fact that Mr. Goff has brought up on two occasions now. Uh, this massive document that the, the station Connecticut, uh, created eons ago. And I don't disagree with Mr. Goff that it should be reviewed on a regular basis, and I, I also. Have come to the conclusion, and maybe it's incorrect, and you can correct me, Mr. Cox. But I've come to the conclusion that it's not just the ambulance association that needs to sneak a peek at the document. It's probably the other safety organizations within our community as well. I am hopeful that, uh, that shortlist that you've been jotting down on your iPad or whatever it is. Uh, that there's gonna be a plan, plan in place so that we can. Ambulance, fire, police, et cetera, all work together. Look at this very extensive plan. Make sure that we are proud of what is there before we sign our life away. And then that it is reviewed on a regular basis, based on whatever the expectations are of the state of Connecticut. My last concern, and I would not have had the concern, but I received this document. And I believe if you go to the second page, it should be May first, two thousand twenty-three through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. You know, I, I, I see the budget of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. I see a, a deficit of three hundred and fifty-five thousand and change. I, I know that the board was asking for, was it a hundred and seventy-three thousand? Okay, well. Yes, I graduated from kindergarten, but in kindergarten, I wasn't able to subtract a hundred and seventy-three thousand. From three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-seven. So there's a. Deficit there. I would be very interested, and this is now a board question. I'd be very interested in hearing from the board what you plan to do to address that. If in fact, the community appropriated the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And if the community pass it in the budget.
I'd like to speak for that. The, um, the reason we're asking for approximately half of our effective deficit is that we do have current assets. To cover ourselves for approximately six to seven years if things remain the same. There are a lot of things in flux, for instance, Medicaid is very poorly funded. They were hoping, because there is some legislation going through, that Medicaid payments to us for calls would be increased. So there's, obviously a budget is a budget, it is movable, that's the first thing. The second thing is that. At the end of six to seven years, things may change. Every community has the same problem, we're not unique. And my feeling is that the state's gonna have to get involved, with the public health department. To su- subsidize or do something for all of us, not just us. So I think we're biding time for six to seven years, if we all remain, remember, main getting the half of what we're losing. In our deficit, that, that makes sense to me as a business person, hopefully it makes the same sense to you. Yes, we're pushing the can down the road, but it may just work.
But it may not.
It may not.
Be back looking for six, seven hundred, because certainly this number would tend to go up, it wouldn't go down.
Who knows?
That's why I do not understand the resistance, why you do not wanna look at minisex. Yeah, the, the cost, well, the deal is the deal, it, it, I don't, I understand there's a seventy-year history, I get that. But this is not the same ambulance association, for seventy years, when you were driving the ambulance, when you were picking people up, it was one hundred percent. Volunteer, there were no stipends, there was no PIP money, it was one hundred percent volunteer. We are not a volunteer ambulance association, well, let's make that very clear, you're looking to become a paid ambulance association. So why would you not want the people who are experts and can do it and know how to make money through their transportation? Cause we all know, as everyone keeps telling me, that's where the big money is, I see the bills from the people. When you do transportation, it's like double the cost of an emergency call, which makes no sense, but the insurance company pays those. So I, I'm looking at these numbers and I see what's coming down the road, we can fund this, we play that game, and all of a sudden, six years, you guys say, I need six hundred thousand dollars. But you're all making the assumption the state or the government are gonna kick in more money. We see the E C, ECS money for our schools deteriorating at a yearly basis. Why do we think they're gonna kick in more? I don't know why, I think that's a foolish assumption. Yes, Mr. Brown?
Well, I think right now, somebody in Hartford has introduced the bill. To adjust some of this, I don't know where it will go, but certainly. This has been kicked around. A number of years, and the legislators have finally. Started to look at it. Now, you're right, I can't predict the future, that bill may fall to the wayside. Nothing may happen, but at least something is, somebody is looking at the situation now. Now, in six years, they may up, uh, what they're allowed to call. Uh, charge for call, as you're saying, they may change that whole structure. So that these, um, volunteer areas can become competitive and afford to pay people. I don't know, I do know, I want this ambulance association to be around, should it, we can always go the other way. At any point in time, but. I want that ambulance in this town, and I think for seven years they've been here, and I think, wow. What do you mean, you're not gonna support them? And I'm not saying, I understand, we're looking at the dollar. They've provided good service to this town. I don't see that stopping. I'm really hopeful now that the legislators are looking at it. That they will address some of it, that just East Hampton's not the only one in this bucket. There's a lot of little towns that are just, have the same problem. So. I for one, or, uh, I wanna do everything, you're right, Dave, in six years, I want you here in six years. Is that simple? I want us here.
I think, I think also that the community wants us to, I don't think, I think they rely on us, and we, we know they do. It's important to them, and they know that we're looking out for them, and that means a lot, we're, and we have a special community, and that's important for all of us.
Those being able to, being able to afford to live here, that's also important to them. I think here or the other end of the line, we can be very worried about their tax file, so, I mean, that's our end that we have to worry about. Are there any other questions from the council members?
Yeah, I, I have one more question, but I'll allow, uh, Mr. Peterson to, uh, ask his question, go right ahead. No, I, I, I'm sitting back waiting to, to hear from you.
It was just so much to hear, a question again, is, uh, I actually wanted to thank you all for coming and sitting with us tonight. Again, more insight, sitting here right now, and with the documents you prepared, thank you very much. Um, than we did at all the other meetings with, uh, the gentleman who's trying to argue on your behalf. So, um, thank you very much for this, and I got a full picture now with the financials. With, with, uh, what you're trying to do, where you're trying to go, and I'm not saying. Uh, you know how that's gonna, uh, influence the outcome, but I appreciate it, and I have a much better understanding of it now, but thank you all for.
Thank you.
For this time, and. Glad we didn't sit down a year ago, could save you a little grand.
The only other question I have, uh, and, and you might not be able to answer tonight, maybe it takes a little more time to look at all the finances. But, uh. The finance board did make a decision a week ago, uh, to remove, uh. The request that, uh, was made for the ambulance association. Uh, I wanna thank Mr. Cox for, uh, including that in the budget package, I, I believe it should have been there, and I'm glad that it was there. The only way that those monies can be forthcoming is if in fact the, the budget is returned to the board of finance for reconsideration. The question that I have for you though, and that's, that's not it, uh. I heard that maybe we could go another seven years if we received a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, based on. If in fact that isn't forthcoming this year, and one never knows if it might come next year, uh. What does that do to that seven-year plan? Does it become a five-year plan, a five-and-a-half-year plan, a four-and-a-half-year plan? And like I said, you don't have to answer tonight, but I'd be very interested in knowing, because I think the community needs to understand. So that, uh, there could be, uh. More expenses coming their way than, uh, they first imag- imagined. And nothing would delight me more than to send it back to the board of finance. And afford them the opportunity to have the same information that we received tonight, so that they could better appreciate. The financial stability of the ambulance association, because I got the sense. From sitting in the meeting and observing the meetings in person or via Zoom, that. They maybe didn't have all the information. But you do have the financial information, and I think it would be critically important for them to have an opportunity to see this. And nothing would delight me but to, uh, be able to return that. To the board of finance for reconsideration. My lips are sealed, Mr. Trump.
We'd be happy to do that with them.
Any other comments? Well, I guess, just a question, because we did, you mentioned it yourself, and two of the things that we wanna hear, some stuff from like the attorney and some questions that we asked. We brought up, there was council park, there was, uh, uh, talking about the agreement, I guess, what's the best way moving forward? Like, we're talking about members from council finance on the agreement, taking out some stuff, revising it, if we need help moving forward to.
From council finance on the agreement, taking out some stuff, revising it, if we need help moving forward to update the goals and plans, like, I guess, what's the best way moving forward? On that, between us and the board, and actually updating this agreement, because we see both sides, like, I think we can say there is some stuff definitely that would like.
I mean, I, I can assure you right now, we are meeting all the requirements to the agreement, I've actually been working preliminarily on a, not a final draft yet. But a document showing the amount of calls each month, the calls that have been turned over, along with response times over the last six, fifteen months. Showing the improvements that have already been taking place over just some changes we've had in these last few months. You know, just, one of the numbers for comparison, January twenty-twenty-two, our response time was sixteen minutes, fifty-two seconds. In January twenty-twenty-three, it was ten minutes, forty-four seconds. So just, I've been working on this, it's, like I said, it's not a final draft yet, so I apologize, I don't have it yet. But it's one of those things, at least I can assure you that we are completing these calls, we are covering a huge amount of calls. And it's just, I would like to share this data with you, like I said, more regularly, so we are transparent.
Right, it says report, so I guess update that to a more realistic report that we could get, right? So you really have something to go off of, that this perfect concept works, this is why this is a good idea, so I guess that's just my overall question is. Like, where, where do we go from here on that?
Well, I, I think actually the next step, which we've been kind of waiting on is the language coming from our attorney.
And submitting changes and then like submitting revisions back and forth, like.
Board, let them look at it.
They submit something back, that type of deal?
To go there, and I think that's the absolute next step.
Wouldn't that have to be internal, that for, is that a state form?
The, the EMS plan?
Yeah.
No, that's a locally created.
Oh, okay.
I think you heard Donald say it's a locally created plan based on a toolkit that the state provides.
Yeah.
So that is our next step.
Yeah.
We submit our recommendation, David, the.
The attorney, look at them, get it, forward them, have them review them, and go from there.
And I would, I would hope that Mr. Cox will put together a plan of action that will highlight for the town council. The steps that he feels, he's the town manager, that he feels would be appropriate for all the safety agencies to work together, to come together. And to develop and to tweak the plan that exists, and then. It's probably not just the ambulance association that's going to have to look at how they account for. Timeframe for arrival, et cetera, et cetera, because, guess what? They all have to come, and they all have to leave, so there are arrival times for all of those agencies. But I would look to the town manager to be able to put a plan together and to share that with us at an appropriate time.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone have more to move here? So, second? All, all favors?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.